The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. Let the role reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. The first thing we're going to do tonight is introduce new employees and volunteers that have just arrived in the city. We're very proud of the group of people that we're going to announce tonight. And so the first person I'm going to call up is Tom Bachan, who is the supervisor of the Building and Inspections Division. Tom, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'd like to introduce you to you tonight, our new permit technician, who's replacing a gal that was here for thirty-two years, Jane Tangis. And I always told Jane, when you retire, I retire. She was that valuable to our department. But we have a new employee that's really come in and hasn't missed a beat and really gripped and taken the job, and it's Alana Sebenauer. And she's here tonight with her husband, Mike, and her son, three-year-old son, Lyndon. Alana, could you come forward?
Counsel, maybe we'll go up here and greet the new people when they're been announced. So why don't we go ahead and step forward?
And she is a local gal. She graduated from high school here in two thousand and one and attended University of Wisconsin River Falls and now just lives south of town.
Okay, then next we have our Police Chief, Ryan Schaefer, Chief.
I was just going to suggest this is a great idea, so we'll just keep cycling everybody through. Tonight I have five employees to introduce. I'm going to mention the names of seven. First of all, Jessica Erbach. She is our, one of our newest receptionists. We opened our front lobby here on February first. She's been absolutely phenomenal. And Jessica lives in Hastings. She has, she graduated from Hastings High School in nineteen ninety-six. She's been, she was actually involved in the Hastings Police Explorers back, back in the day. So she's had an interest in criminal justice for quite some time. As I said, she resides here in Hastings, has four children, and we're just ecstatic that she, she joined us. She's been doing a great job, so thank you. The next employee is our second part-time receptionist, Kim Galhar. Kim lives in Hastings. She's lived here since she was a child. She graduated high school here in nineteen seventy-six, received her secretarial diploma from Dakota Technical College in, or in nineteen seventy-eight. She's married, married her husband in nineteen seventy-nine. They have two children, three grandchildren, and professionally she's worked in Dakota County Administration, Dakota County Technical College, and the state of Minnesota. So she brings a wealth of experience to our, our reception area. Next, I've got three police reserves. I'll introduce them one at a time, and then I've asked Julie to do a quick swearing-in, and then they can get their photograph with you. First, Michael Baird. Michael and his wife Laura live in Hastings. They've been here since two thousand and twelve. They have three children. He graduated from Park High School, later received an associate's degree in law enforcement, completed his skills in two thousand and eight. He's interested in exploring law enforcement as a possible career, but if it doesn't come to fruition, he still wants to be involved with the reserves. He hopes to use this opportunity towards becoming a police officer, or police officer irregardless if his, his dreams of being a police officer don't come true. Next is Dominic Milney. Dominix lived in Hastings since two thousand and six, graduated from Hastings High School in two thousand and thirteen. He married his wife Casey in two thousand and sixteen. Is currently a law enforcement student at Inver Hills Community College, hopes to have a career in law enforcement after completing his studies. Milney sought membership with the Hastings Police Department Reserves to gain more experience and to help serve the community. The last one tonight will be Jeremy Thompson. There you go. Standing ovation. Jeremy grew up in Western and Central Ontario, Canada. He's the oldest of four siblings. In his final year of high school, their family moved to Toronto, then to Pennsylvania, and then later settled in Minnesota. In the years follows, following, Thompson began a law enforcement, or began his law enforcement studies. He graduated from Inver Hills Community College, Hanupin Technical College with his associate's degree in law enforcement. And in December, or in December two thousand and twelve, he currently works at Hamlin University as an Assistant Director of Safety and Security and lives in Hastings with his wife Brittany and their baby Addison. He wants to get back to the community by volunteering his time, knowledge, and skills. He's hopeful that through his hard work and dedication, he might someday become a Hastings Police Officer. So with that, I want to welcome these three new police reserves. And Julie, if you could.
that I will support the Constitution. The United States of America. The Constitution. The State of Minnesota. Of the State of Minnesota. And the ordinances. And the ordinances. Of the City of Hastings. The City of Hastings. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Reserve Police Officer. The duties of Reserve Police Officer. Of the City of Hastings. The City of Hastings. Counties of Dakota and Washington. Counties of Dakota and Washington. And State of Minnesota. The State of Minnesota. To the best of my judgment and ability. On my honor. On my honor. I will never betray my badge. My integrity. My integrity. My character. My character. Or the public trust. Or the public trust. I will always have the courage. I will always have the courage. To hold myself. To hold myself. And others accountable. And others accountable. For our actions. For our actions. I will uphold the Constitution. I will uphold the Constitution. My community. My community. And the agency I serve. And the agency I serve. Good job. Thank you. Thank you.
Richard Brown, former Hastings Police Officer, retired, joined us as our latest, our new evidence room technician, will help us with our evidence handling. And then we also had Brian Jansen, who is also a reserve officer that couldn't be here tonight. So thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Our Fire Chief, Mike Shute, welcome to the meeting, Mike.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. In the summer of two thousand and sixteen, with the assistance of Administrative Director, Services Director Julie Flattin, we were able to fill some vacancies within the paid-on-call ranks of the Fire Department. Through an intense hiring process, which included some physical abilities testing and also some interviews with a group of city employees throughout the city, we conducted interviews, multiple interviews, and then selected eight candidates to become paid-on-call firefighters within our organization. Training started in September with National Registry Emergency Medical Technician, and as a licensed training institute by the state of Minnesota, we were able to do that training in-house at a cost savings. Led by Captain Jamie Stevens, Stevens, they conducted the training for the next four months at the Fire Department, which included classroom, hands-on, and mentoring in the field. Just before Christmas, they all successfully took their National Registry pass, tests and passed with a hundred percent pass rate. So very proud of them, especially when the national average is less than seventy percent on the first time taking the test. In January, they jumped right into fire training, and that is being conducted at the Dakota County Northern Fire Training Academy over in Eagan with our mutual aid partners over there. And I'm happy to say that we were able to secure some grant money from the state of Minnesota to cover one hundred percent the cost of their firefighting training to the tune of about twelve thousand dollars. So they're still in that training right now, but they are responding on emergency calls in a training capacity. And we're very proud to introduce Jeremy Bickner. Derek Cooper. Eric Gasky. Tim Likes. Jacob Loman. Phil Nelson. Jenny Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I thank everyone who's come on.
I know it's one of those odd moments, can I leave or not? But you may leave if you're, you're ready to go. Yep, yep. And I know the Fire Department has training, so you got to get to training. That's very important. Thank you, everyone. Just want to clear out the dead here.
Can't watch any movies with dogs in them. Dog's Purpose is out. I was in the movie theater bawling my eyes out at the preview, I'm like, nope.
Okay, Council, we have before us the, the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on February sixth, two thousand and seventeen. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. We'll go to council items to be considered. Council, I'd like to bring up one matter to be considered, and we'll, I'll put it under Administration as one A. And that would be a request from, from a neighborhood in Hastings, from the Pine Street and Southview Street area neighborhood. And they have a request in regards to a possible ordinance provisions. So I'm going to put that under one A under Administration. Next, consent agenda. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Balsanick makes motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Now we have a motion before the body, is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to Administration, a one A. This is in regard to the announcement I just made. Many of you recall that last week we had a community notification, meeting at the middle school that went very well, had a lot of good information. A lot of the neighbors were there and expressed some concern, as anyone would, faced with this difficult situation. One of the things that requested by the neighborhood is that we begin the process of looking at an ordinance change in regards to safe zones, or child-safe zones, that some other communities around our state have passed. And their request is that we begin the process tonight, or start the process as a request to look into such an ordinance. And so as part of that, Council, I'm going to request that we send this ordinance possibility, have the Public Safety Committee of the City Council, Chair Brox is the chair of that committee, to look at the different proposals that other communities use or, and, and study this ordinance, and to work on this ordinance to bring forward something that will really work for Hastings and, and all the issues that are involved with such an ordinance. And I think the community's concerned. We, I know all of us up here feel that same concern, and, and so I would like to refer that matter to the Public Safety Committee. And no action is taken if Council is so inclined. Second? Next is the, I want to ask one question before we go. Did someone come forward with a petition? Is there a petition here? Okay, we will accept that petition. Please. Thank you. I'll come down to see you as well. The future meeting of the Public Safety Committee will be announced. It's going to be on our website, newspaper, and contact the radio. We have to give advance notice. And so once that first meeting gets designated or, or, you know, gets filled out, we'll get that information out to you. Okay? Thank you for the petition. Okay. Council, next is we have liquor license compliance check failures. Dan, we have the first one, Wyatt's Twisted Americana.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. You're tonight asked to consider four separate actions to decide on imposing administrative penalties against four alcohol establishments in the city of Hastings that failed compliance checks in December of last year. Again, these are four separate actions. I did provide the Council with a fairly comprehensive memo that provides some information on the ordinance, the best practices program, and then some history of prior violations that had occurred and the penalties that were imposed by the City Council for those. That applies to all of the four actions. Then in the council packet, you've got separate council memos for each of the four items that are before you. With regard to the Wyatt's Twisted Americana, the action that's requested tonight is simply to approve a written stipulation that was signed by the establishment licensee and then submitted as part of the ordinance procedure that allows for that to happen. So again, the action on that matter is primarily just to approve that stipulation if the Council is okay with it. If you want to take these one at a time, I can give a brief summary of several of them at once, if that would be appropriate, Mayor.
I think one at a time would be appropriate. Thank you, Counselor.
Good. So I can stand for any questions on that matter. Again, the action before you is to approve the stipulation that has been signed by Wyatt's Twisted Americana. I do not expect that anybody from that establishment would be here tonight because they have submitted the written stipulation.
Councilmember Brox.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Brox makes motion to approve the stipulation, is seconded by Councilmember Folch. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have Cub Discount Liquors.
Your Honor, this is also a similar matter where the Council is asked to decide on the administrative penalty that would be assessed against Cub Discount Liquors for a similar violation in December. It is my understanding that there's a representative from Cub Foods here that is intending, and based on our prior discussion, will waive any right to a factual hearing tonight, but more will ask the Council to consider some other penalty other than what would be proposed as part of the presumptive penalties in the city's ordinance. So I would propose that, assuming that representative is here, they be allowed to come to the podium. Mayor, I would ask that you confirm with them that they are waiving the factual portion of the hearing, and then give them an opportunity to be heard, and then the Council can deliberate from there.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. And can you give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, it's Doug Hagerty. I live in Lakeville, one eight seven four seven, Lakeville.
And the manager of Cub?
I'm the manager, store director of Cubs, and then I have Megan here. She is the manager of the discount liquor store.
Is it our understanding that you waived the factual hearing?
Yes.
That's correct? Okay. We have affirmative? And please, Doug, proceed.
We'd just like to bring up some things. We, we understand, Cub Foods understands, and Supervally understands how serious this is. Our ten-ten is always to make sure that our customers are safe when they leave our building, and also whatever happens in the community. So we take this extremely seriously. We do have a policy where if anybody is, there's no tolerance. They are released and dismissed from their work, which we did that immediately after we confirmed at the time that, that, that employee had done what he had done. We also have an ID reader that is, is set up next to our register that the, the associates can scan that, and once they do, it will identify the age of the, the customer. A couple other things we would like, we haven't had a violation since two thousand and thirteen. We have not had a violation in the store itself, just a violation in the liquor store. We also would like to have, we do have one associate that was in the best practices, which is Megan. She was the first one to ever do it. Now, years, in two thousand and thirteen, that's when you asked us to have all of them done. We've had some turnover in the past. We now have a very good crew. We have four, four new employees. We'd like to put them through the best practices as soon as possible. We have started to look into that, and we, we know there's a class coming up in May. I really do, you know, and the other thing is, I would like you to consider the fact that this will affect four families, and it also affects their income if we do shut down the liquor store for three days. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate that very much. Did you have anything else to say?
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Council, this, this is now coming before us here at the Diaz. Let me, as we begin this discussion, I know we have some new council members and stuff, and we have some latitude here as we look into these matters. I'm going to suggest one possible way here. One of the things I think is important for me is that we get most of our business, not all of our businesses that deal with on-sale and off-sale, all to be involved in best practices. I think we need to have them all involved in that program and get that workforce educated about, you know, what, what they learn at that process, okay? So when I, when I looked at this, and I know the councils, past councils have done similar actions, where if a business comes forward and says, I will join best practices if they have not been there before, then I think that should be recognized. And so in this particular case with Cub Foods, when I read this thing, I'm going to suggest this course of action, that the thousand-dollar penalty stay. My, my reason for that is because they, they weren't, they had a check failure in December thirteenth on two thousand and thirteen. At that time, whatever the reasons may be, they opted out of the best practices program. And I think they should have stayed in it, and, you know, with a high turnover employees, they should have been going to best practices. Now that they have a, they've committed back to best practices, which is important to me, and we just had one person say that they're in the program now and sign up in May, for me, then I think we can, in my, in my opinion, we ought to stay the three-day license suspension. If they get caught again in the next twenty-four months, and, and their employees stay in the best practices, then the, you know, violation of number two is, and I can't remember what that, what that is, Dan, but it's considerable more days of suspension and a higher fine. So again, Council, I would, I would suggest that we keep the thousand-dollar penalty because of the past action of two thousand and thirteen and the fact that they were in best practices, and then they got out of best practices. So we'll hold that, but in terms of the three-day license suspension and recognition of the fact that they're going to go back into the best practices program, I think ought to be recognized, and we hope that they'll stay in that program for the life of their business there. I'll throw that out, and we're open up for discussion. Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of quick questions for staff. How often do we offer the best practice class? And I agree with the mayor that I think we're going to see high turnover rate of employees, and I'm wondering how often are we going to offer it so they can get a chance to get into that class? If it's once every six months, it might not be enough for someone to fall through the cracks on this one, is what I'm worried about. So I'm curious how often that happens? That'd be my first question.
Councilmember Vaughn, the practice, the best practices program is offered every May, and then we also allow liquor license holders to go either through the AG or the, another state program where they offer more opportunities, and we accept that.
So the, okay, so it's, it's the same program that somebody else offers, that we offer once a year? Okay. Follow-up with that, Your Honor.
Councilmember?
Only thing I would ask that we look at is, you know, this, this class is coming in May. What if they don't stay in that program over the next, what's the stipulation then? They say they're going to do it, but what if, what happens if they don't? What if those four employees?
My, my recommendation is that they have to commit to the best practices program. Stipulate that in writing by March first, that they will be in the program. I think in this particular case, I think they've already just indicated they are. But a written statement by March first that they will be. If they do not, after March first, stipulate they will have done the, the current, as you see here, the current penalties would apply, and then it would come back to the Council to select the days of suspension. Is there any other comment, questions? Okay. Well, I, what I'll do, Councilmember Balsanick.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just a point of clarification, a couple of things, first of all, to our attorney. Dan, I've got two copies of, of the, of some information that you gave us from February thirteenth of two thousand and seventeen. Are those both the same, then?
Councilmember, I, I guess they might be. Again, there was one general packet that had much more information with it that should be dated. I think that was actually the thirteenth. That, no, that was the fifteenth as well. I can't say what you're looking at exactly. There were separate packets for each of the individual ones that had the name of the establishment right on it.
Okay, thank you. It's just I, you know, I started going through everything, February thirteenth, and then I got about halfway through and I saw February thirteenth again, and it all looked like the same. I just wanted to be sure that I didn't, that I didn't miss anything. Thank you. With regard to, to the participation in the best practices program, now, and I'm referring here to the April twenty, two thousand and sixteen, I don't know if you want to call it a letter or notification, it's, it's from our deputy city clerk and Sergeant Hicks from our police department, and the subject is regarding liquor license best practices program, and it does, you know, talk about when the program is offered in May on two separate dates. Are those two separate dates something that, that the establishment has to, has to be in attendance for at both of those, or is, are, are both of them covering the same information?
Your Honor and Council, it is, it is one or the other. You have two opportunities, it's the same training.
Okay. And then required items in our box here on that same one. A minimum of seventy-five percent of alcohol-selling employees at any one time. So a business signs up, let's say for, it would have been Tuesday, May tenth, seventy-five percent of their employees at that time. And if any of those employees leave, are they still, are they still sanctioned as being part of the best practices program? I, I've got confusion, I just, I'm trying to see how this all works together here. I mean, I'm assuming, okay, the business took part in it, seventy-five percent of the employees at that time, or at least seventy-five percent of the employees at that time took the program, but with turnover, and I grew up in the restaurant business, so I know what it's like in terms of maintaining consistent employment. Within a year or six months, or even two months, or whatever, you could end up with those seventy-five percent employees gone. Right? And then, so where is the credibility of the best practices program if the employees who took it might not be employed anymore?
Councilmember, the, the program and the document that the establishment signs does have them certify that they will maintain that for the course of the, of the period of time that the certification is, is applicable for, a one-year period. I think if you look at the second page of that document you were looking for, looking at, the April twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, there is not a process in place by at, the April 20th, 2016, there is not a process in place by the city to regularly check that during the one-year period, but the establishment acknowledges that they can be checked at any time on the requirement. They have to meet it if checked, and I think there's the presumption that if there's a failure, they will be checked at that time to verify compliance. So, that's generally what we do in the, in the program, I think, how it's administered. You're absolutely correct, there is not an every month or anything check that, that makes sure they're still complying.
Okay, and, and how do you define a failure? If they fail, you're saying that they have lost the...
75% of those employees at, they took, they took it in May, now it's July, and 50% of that 75% is gone. So, are they, have they failed at that point?
I think they would be failing to meet the requirements of the best practices program at that point in time, based on how it's administered. They may be given an opportunity to come into compliance then in a very short order, but yes, that's, that's the process that's in place.
And, and it is therefore the establishment's responsibility to, to keep up with that, then? It is not the city's responsibility to keep up with that, okay?
It is the establishment's responsibility, and the city can spot check it as it deems appropriate.
And remember that, as Juliette said, there's other options. They just don't have to go to our training in May. They can go to the AG. And what was the other one, Julie, VAG's office or program?
The Minnesota Licensed Beverage Association.
Okay, Minnesota Licensed Beverage Association. So, they have other ample, ample opportunities to meet the best practices criteria by going to other programs as well.
I, my whole reason for asking this is hypothetically, again, let's say, two of the employees who were, who were in the program in May are still there, and now the establishment has new employees. Can, can those employees who took the program train those new employees? Or do they have to go through the whole process all over again? Can an employee train employees?
No, I don't believe so. I believe they would have to go through the program either offered by the city or other sources.
Because I'm not seeing that in here, or am I not seeing where it is?
Your Honor and councilmember, if, if I can direct you to perhaps that first page from Adeline and Wayne Hicks, the, the first item under required items states that a minimum of 75% of alcohol selling employees at any one time have attended alcohol training conducted by the Hastings Police Department, or other training pre-approved by the City of Hastings. So, I think historically, the council's goal has been to have our businesses be well-educated on selling alcohol, and this is part of that program. If a, if a business comes in and they've had, you know, maybe a corporate training, or they, they're not available for the, the city-sponsored training, and there's something available somewhere else, I think we've been pretty responsive on allowing that and accepting that as, as checking that box for the criteria.
Okay, so below that, in the middle box there on that same April 20 document, business, the business has, let's see, required items, the business has an internal program in place for providing ongoing training of both new and current alcohol-selling employees, but there's no, is that separate from what's above there, or is that, okay, if you didn't want to go through the city, could you internally, as a business, conduct your own training?
Your Honor and counsel, I think, I think the intent was businesses should have an internal program, but the best practices program is a two and a half hour program that we, that we've put together, and if you go down a couple more pages, it talks about the topics that are included, which I think generally are probably a little bit more robust than maybe that internal training program. To my knowledge, I don't know that we've ever been questioned about, does my internal program comply with this? I could maybe turn to Julie or Dan, if that's ever been a question, but it appears perhaps that was, that hasn't been. So, I don't, I don't think that's how we've looked at it in the past.
I'm just looking at it face value, is all. And, okay, required items, there's one box, you can do it this way, then I'm looking at the box below it, and it says, "Well, the business could do an internal program and take care of it that way." You know, I'm not an attorney, and that's why Dan sits here. But, I, I want to be sure we're not leaving ourselves, I, I don't want to say it that way, I don't want to say that, you know, are we leaving ourselves open to something? I'm just looking at this, this is something that's passed out to a business that has applied for a liquor license. They get it, they look it over, and they're saying, "Oh, all right, I've got three options here," because there is a third option below the second one that I was going through. You know, business has an internal policy requiring identification checks for anyone appearing to be 40 years old or under, and I've been checked in Hastings a couple of times on that, as a matter of fact, so, anyway, we'll let that go. But, but I won't say when it was, anyhow. I'm, I'm looking, I'm, I'm trying to look at this, I don't want to be a devil's advocate, but I'm, I'm saying, "All right, you came in, you applied for the license, we gave you a whole bunch of documents, and now you're looking at them over, and you're going, 'Well, I can do this.'" Well, the May 10th and the May 14th thing aren't going to work for me, so what are the, what other options do I have? Oh, I can do an internal program, and so maybe I'm going to do that instead.
Counsel, these are each independent requirements. All three of them are required. And if we, you know, we can certainly look at the documents to make it more clear, but all of them have to be satisfied for the establishment to meet the requirements. They have to have 75% of their selling employees that have gone through the, either the program that's offered by the city, or an alternative program that's highlighted in that first box. In addition, at all times, they have to have the internal program for ongoing training. That's something that every business that serves alcohol should have, and generally their dram shop insurance is probably requiring it as well. In addition, they have to have the third item completed, which is an internal policy requiring identification checks for anyone appearing to be under age 40. So, all of those are separate requirements that the business must satisfy in order to meet the best practices requirements. So, in addition.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, Dan. I just wish we had printed it that way, that all three, you know, you have to do the following, this, 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 and this. I know it says required items up at the top, but I just look at it, and I say, "I got a menu here, and I can pick whatever I want."
It doesn't say menu.
Pardon?
But it doesn't say menu.
No, it doesn't, but the implication is, or again, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of a business owner who's coming in and is, usually if it's a, you know, if they're applying for a liquor license, it's...
Let me say this, councilmember, and I think you bring it up some valid points.
Yeah.
And we may want to have discussion. I don't think that discussion's appropriate now. And what I mean by that is, we have before us right now, we're talking about the Cub situation. We have our current ordinance. I think all the points that you're bringing up are valid, but if we were here tonight talking about the overall best practices program, but we're not, we're here to talk about this particular establishment and the penalty before it. Now, we may want to have these discussions, well, perhaps in a future public safety, they don't have nothing else to do, committee, they could always, they could talk about public safety then, and, you know, we could talk about this ordinance and rewrite it, or say one, two, three on there, or whatever, and I think we could have that discussion. Again, I think you bring up very valid points. I just don't think, in, in what we're trying to decide right now, that it's time for that debate.
And, and I thank you for expressing that, Your Honor, that, that perspective, and I totally understand where you're coming from. My, my whole point with this is that we've got some establishments that are in violation, and I'm trying to figure out how they got there, and I'm trying to figure out what we have that they're supposed to be aware of and how they're supposed to interpret it. But I'll leave that alone for now. But I, I, I just think, yeah, it, I, I think you're right. I, I think we probably should take a look at the way we've worded this and perhaps reword it in the future. So, I'll, I'll stop at this point.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks. Coming back to the subject of this particular violation, you know, I take underage sales very seriously, and I think it's very concerning that this is the second violation within 36 months. I know that our parameters say within 24 months, but the fact that it is 36 months, and it is a second violation, and, and I think that this is, you know, it's in the best practices, is common sense, you know? I mean, I'm sorry, but these places, I mean, if it's your business to sell liquor, you are also not only, you know, required for your, for your, for your license through the city, as counsel said, that it's also a requirement of their dram shop insurance. And so, it's not like we're making up the rules here. I mean, these are standard operations, and if their employees haven't been receiving the proper training, I think that, that, that is concerning, and I know, you know, you always have, you know, there's that, you know, one employee that, you know, can be difficult and, and hard to get through to, but still, the fact that this is a second violation within 36 months, our guidelines say that if it's a first violation, it should be a thousand dollar civil penalty and a three day license suspension. I guarantee a three day license suspension probably racks up to what, $15,000, something like that? I don't know what the, what the, the daily revenue is from an establishment like this, but three days to be down, one of which is required to be a Friday or Saturday, that's a lot of money. And I agree that, I don't think that the employees who did any, you know, who didn't do anything wrong should be penalized for the actions of just one, and so I agree that I don't think that it would be fair to shut down the establishment and have the hourly staff affected. However, I think that a thousand dollar civil penalty is light in this particular circumstance, and I would recommend a heavier violation. It says here that our, looking at our parameters, that a second violation within 24 months should be $1,500 civil penalty and a six day license suspension, and so I would advocate for at least going up to the $1,500 civil penalty and taking into consideration something a little bit more, you know, strict.
Counselmember, may, may, may I ask a question? May I yield a question? Would you, are you seeking a motion, then, that the civil penalty be $1,500 with the three days suspension stayed? Is that what you're, is that what you're suggesting?
That is what I'm suggesting.
Are you going to make that a motion?
Okay, so, okay, this is my first, my first time at it, so I make a motion. But, however, I don't want to stifle any conversation unless it has a comment, so...
It'll be before the body, that's fine, you can make a motion anytime.
You can?
Yes.
So, I would like to make a motion to increase the civil penalty to at least $1,500, considering the guidelines that were given for the number of times the violation has occurred.
And 15, and the, and the three day suspension?
And to forego the three day suspension.
Okay, okay, councilmember Foltz has made the motion that, that the civil penalty be $1,500, and that the three day suspension be stayed. Does that also contingent upon them staying or being in the best practices program in a written notification by March 1st?
Yes.
Okay, we'll put that part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? A second to my councilmember Vaughn. The motion, we have the Foltz motion before us. Okay, discussion to that motion. Councilmember Liefeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a couple of questions regarding this. One, they are a best practices Cub, correct?
No.
They are not best practices. Okay. That answers my question.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Vaughn.
The reason, I think, it's 2017, I think, once a year that we locally offer a best practice is not enough. That's why I second this motion, because I think we need to work with whoever the other options are ourselves, and get an online option that these young adults, or even older adults, can take this test, or take this best practice as an online option for the future, because right now, I think we offer one option. We don't even have a transit. What if somebody had to get somewhere to take that class? We don't have the transit getting out of Hastings to even go take that class. Granted, the business could offer that, but I'm saying, as a public body, we don't have that option for them, and we're only offered it once a year. So, I think we have a lot of work to do about getting this thing up to speed of either online or offer it more often.
Let me ask a question to Julie. Julie, how often is the other programs offered in lieu of the best practices, the AG, of the Licensed Beverage Association? How often do they have these programs?
Council, or mayor, I'm not absolutely certain.
Okay. Because if they offer it once a quarter or something, I think you might have answered your own question, you know? Maybe we need to look into that. Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, so we, we don't know how, how often these other courses are offered. Do we know where they're offered? Are, do they come down here to Hastings, or do we have to get the employees up to the Capitol or Roosevelt?
We don't have to take the employees anywhere, the employer will, you know, that's their, that's their...
Well, when I say we, I'm, I'm talking about, you know, does the establishment, does anybody know? Are, are these courses offered, do they bring them to the city, or do you have to go to them?
Councilmember, I am not aware that they travel around the state and offer the program.
Okay. I, I guess as long as I have the floor, as far as the motion goes, I am in favor of staying the three day suspension of business, but I am opposed to the $1,500, just because as a former business owner, and I, it doesn't matter to me if they're cover Walmart, or, you know, the mom and pop store down the street, it's a hefty amount, and I, I would just like to think that we are working with our businesses, so I would vote against this motion because of that. But I would be in favor, as I said, of staying the three day license suspension. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Councilmember Brox.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I agree with councilmember Foltz, this is an important issue. I believe that the city is offering this best practices program as an opportunity for businesses to help reduce crime. The onus, though, I believe, is on them to take advantage of the program, to make sure that their employees are members of the program. And the only reason that I would not support a $750, oh, I'm sorry, $1,500 penalty is that the violation hasn't been within 24 months, it's been within 36 months. So, I think we'd be stretching the guideline that we've already set up a little too far. We haven't notified anybody that, and we can make that decision, but I feel like we need to follow the presumptive penalties that we've established here. So, I wouldn't vote for that motion, although I do agree, and I think that it's important that the businesses know that we do want to work with you, but we also, it's, it's your responsibility to follow state and local law. And so, we're just here to make sure that that happens in the facility in any way that we can. And so, I also agree with Mark that we have an obligation to provide the classes, but we provide the information, and it's really up to the business to make sure that they're taking advantage of the program through providing, that's my...
Councilmember Lahn.
Counselor Fleagle, what, what if any precedents is there in recent history of us reducing the amount of days in operation, or out of operation, I should say, in, in instances like this?
Sure, councilmember. I think somewhere in my more lengthy memo, it discusses a 2011 situation where there were, based on my recollection, perhaps six establishments that failed at that point in time. There was similar discussion to this about the best practices program at that point in time, and then, at, I believe, for all of those establishments, the council did impose, as I recall, a $1,000 civil penalty that was not stayed, so that was effective, they had to pay that. But the council at that point in time did stay a three day suspension on the condition that the establishments got enrolled in the best practices program. I believe that hearing probably occurred in January, and they were required to do that by about March of that year, so a similar situation to what's been proposed here.
Mayor?
Councilmember Liefeld?
Dan, this... Dan, this might also be a question for you. Thank you, Your Honor. So the best practices clearly isn't a Hastings program. It's clearly a statewide program. Is that correct?
Actually, Councilmember, this is a Hastings program. Other cities do have similar programs that operate in similar ways.
So are violations, this is specific to the city of Hastings, then?
That's correct. These were, there was a general survey done at the time to get input from other municipalities, and so there was some following of those, but this is specific to Hastings.
And this best practices has been in place in the city of Hastings since?
Two thousand nine.
Thank you.
One of the reasons why I offered, Councilmember Lund, this, you know, when I began the meeting, offered the thousand and the stayed was based on the two thousand eleven action, based on those discussions. Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for explaining that. My only concern about it is that it, it doesn't have any teeth.
Right.
And I'm not necessarily opposed to, to, you know, considering just, just a financial penalty, but I don't know if it really makes sense for us to even publicize that, that, you know, first offense not in the program, three days, if, if really all you have to do is ask, and, and that gets waived. So I, I mean, I, that's my, my holdup, I think, at this point, is, is, does it have, you know, at what point would we actually enforce that particular aspect?
I, I've seen it done at the next offense, if there is one. Let's hope there's not. Councilmember Foltz?
No, I would just like to point out that the, our guidelines right now are a thousand dollar civil, civil penalty and a three-day license suspension. And that three-day license suspension, as I was trying to make a point of before, is, you know, I don't know, it depends from, you know, if it's a, a small establishment or, but I would say that Cub Foods is probably one of the larger liquor stores within our community with the amount of volume that's going through it. And so, and so I guess I shouldn't guess, you know, what the revenue is on a particular day, but on a Friday or Saturday, I'm sure it's substantial, and that's what this would be required for them to have to be closed on. And so I don't think that, I think a thousand dollars, again, like as Trevor was saying, is, I think it's just, it's just a slap on their wrist. And I know that we're supposed to only be looking at twenty-four months, but it, I mean, it, it was exactly thirty-six months, and I'm not willing to look aside because that shows, I mean, to me, a pattern of offense, and particularly if they're not, if they're not taking the time to make sure that their employees are properly educated and keeping up on, you know, the training requirements, I just, I don't feel that that's an excusable offense, so...
Hey, Council, I think we're, we have a motion before us. I think we're becoming fully informed. Is there any final discussion points? Okay? All those in favor of, of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay.
No.
Nay.
The chair is in doubt. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Councilmember Foltz?
Aye.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Nay.
Councilmember Liefeld?
Nay.
Councilmember Lund?
Nay.
Councilmember Brox?
Nay.
Mayor Hicks?
Aye. Okay, I'll seek another motion. We still have before us the issue of Cub Foods. I'll seek a motion. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Brox? Do you have a motion?
Set the presumptive penalty of a thousand dollar fine and make the three-day suspension and the enrollment of the classes.
Okay. That they indicate by March first. Okay? Councilmember Brox makes the following motion, that the monetary penalty be one thousand dollars, that the three-day suspension be stayed, and that they're required by March first in writing, that they are, will be a part of the best practices program. That is the motion before us. Is there further discussion to that motion? Oh, I need a second. Second by Councilmember Lund. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to that motion? Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could ask one of the representatives from Cub a question, why did you drop out of the best practices program?
I actually wasn't there at the, at the store. I've only been at the store for eight months. So Mike Harris is the part owner of our store. He told me basically what had happened is they got Megan in right away. Megan was the first one in, then they had a little bit of turnover at the time, and then, by then, the classes weren't available. So that's why they didn't get the other two in. So it was just one of those deals. Now, you know, I'm committed, and I know Megan's committed to getting this done and taking, and I, I agree with you. I, it, it's, it's, it's serious, but we take it, and we're going to take it as serious as you guys do. I, I've talked to Super Value about it, and we do train our people every day. We talk to them every day. I walk the store, I talk to the guys, the girls, and, you know, tell them, you know, are you checking IDs? Are you looking at things? Or, you know, it's common sense. In this instance that it happened, it's not excusable, but there was some things that happened. He was by himself, and he was just busy, and it just happened, and he just made that mistake trying to get him out. But that's the reason why, and I did talk to Mike. They tried to get in, they were going to try to do it before, but I think things slipped between the cracks. There was new store directors come in. I think they've had four or five new store directors since then, so...
And that's why I'm asking, because I, I did have a conversation with Mike Harris, and Mike had actually been out of the store with, with no responsibility. He had been moved up to, I think, the Midway Cub Store.
Right.
And I don't want to, you know, I'm not speaking for your business, but it, confusion in terms of, does the left hand know what the right hand is doing on that?
Oh, my God.
It just, other things that enter into my mind, again, you know, having grown up in the restaurant business for a huge number of years, and, you know, when did this occur? Did it occur, did it occur during a busy time of day? Were there ten people standing in line? Was this the only person in there at the time that this happened? You know, was it close to closing? I, you know, was the employee trying to do inventory, you know, et cetera, et cetera? And it, it just kind of goes back to my original comment that I, I just think as a city, we need to work with our businesses. We've got you here twisting in the wind tonight, you know, and it's, it's on TV. I know there's a million and a half people watching here in Hastings as we're going through all of this. You know, you've, you've had the documentation, you've known about it, you know you're going to have to come before us. I know there's been discussions that you've had with your employees and so forth, and I'm just thinking that that's enough right there. And so I would vote against this motion as well, because whether it's a large business or a small business, a thousand dollars is a lot of money. And with the, with the turnover in management that occurred, I would like to give the company the benefit of the doubt on this. I don't, you know, whether the employee did it on purpose, whether they were, you know, just totally out of it. I know Mike said that person was terminated.
Yeah.
And that person is responsible for the three hundred dollar fine, right? Which is not paid for by Cub. It's paid for by the former employee. And, and I just think that's where the lesson is learned at, at that point. Thank you.
Okay. Council, we've been on this for a bit. I think all the issues are clear. Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Foltz?
No.
Councilmember Balsanik?
No.
Councilmember Liefeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Brox?
Yes.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes. With a five to two vote, the promotion, the motion prevails. Okay, we'll go on to the next one. We have Breakaway Arts Cafe. Dan?
Your Honor and Council, similar situation here. The council's asked to consider an administrative penalty be assessed against Breakaway Arts LLC. Again, in this situation, it's my understanding, there's a representative from the company here. From my discussions with her, it's my understanding, they will waive that factual portion of the hearing, and again, will ask to address the council as to the administrative penalty to be imposed. Breakaway Arts is not currently enrolled in the best practices program, and there are no prior violations for this establishment.
Okay. Mecca? Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, City Council. I'm Mecca Page. I'm the owner of Breakaway Arts and Breakaway Cafe. I just wanted...
Do you agree to, to waive the factual hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank everyone to, for the opportunity to be able to tell my side of the story and, and ask for some leniency here. We just opened the cafe on November first. Addie had sent the renewal form for our liquor license back in April. I did get that paperwork that you were referring to, and we didn't have cafe staff, I didn't have a cafe manager, the cafe was not even built at that point in time. I emailed Addie and I said, "We absolutely want to participate in the best practices program, but I don't have any staff to send, I don't have anyone to attend the program, and we're not ready, we don't have a cafe yet." When the build-out was completed, which was about near the end of October, there was no best practices program available at that point in time. I did hire a cafe manager who had gone through the best practices program when she worked at Carboni's Pizza back in April of the previous year. And I was thankful that she had gone through that and asked her to specifically train our staff, new cafe staff that we had hired in, like, the middle of October. And she did. She went through a very rigorous training process with our staff members. We then had a staff meeting on December sixth, and the sting operation was December twentieth. In our December sixth staff meeting, we reiterated everything. We went through it all over again. December twentieth, four days before, five days before Christmas, we had just also reiterated customer service. Our staff member that committed the violation was in the middle of shift change, not that that's an excuse. She was bringing a new employee up to speed on the next duties, and she very absent-mindedly served that alcohol. When she realized what had happened, she was absolutely sick about it, as were all of us. So what that meant to me, as the owner of the business in a startup mode, I mean, we are brand new, we had barely gotten the doors open, it was a real wake-up call as to just how hard it is to get everyone up to speed as quickly as we need to in a startup, and to get them to understand that, you know, yeah, they've got a responsibility and, and a lot of jobs to do at any given point, we're all multitasking, but, but the alcohol part of our job is incredibly serious. They know that deep down, but sometimes they just make mistakes, and, and she just made a serious mistake. So we have every intention in May to participate in that best practices program. My only concern moving forward in that is that we have only been open for three months. We've had about seven thousand people come through our doors, so it's been a very crazy, busy, kind of steady, fast pace. We've gone through eight cafe employees already, eight, that have been hired, worked for a month or for some, in some cases, two weeks, and said, "I can't do this, it's too hard," and have left. And so how could I possibly keep that seventy-five percent compliance rate with that kind of turnover of staff? I mean, I, I, I don't know the answer to that. So I am asking you guys to consider how, you know, difficult it might be for even a small cafe like ours. I mean, we're not a big place, and, and so having enough time and/or opportunities for staff to be able to, to attend those kind of training programs is really important. And so I love your idea about maybe an online system or, or some other way, because even trying to get staff to go up to the cities to take training, when some of our staff only work fifteen hours a week, you know, so that this is not their top priority, it's not their top job, it's just, it's just a real interesting dilemma. And I do feel like we need to have solutions to that problem so that we can all work together. Can I answer any other questions about the incident?
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate that, Mecca. Now, that issue now comes before us, Council. I'm going to offer the same advice because we did in two thousand eleven. Again, best practices is what I'm looking for. I want people in best practices. I understand some of the issues that you brought up, but until those things get changed, you know, that's your option, just go to the cities or whatever, and, you know, that's up, not just to you, but any business in the community. So, and that might be a discussion, again, for another, for another time, you know, if we want to relook at some of these issues, we'll do that another time. Tonight, much before us, is, is this binding, and I would, Council, being consistent is what I said earlier, I will, I will suggest that we have the five hundred dollar civil penalty and then stay the three days with a written statement by Breakaway Arts Cafe that they will be in the best practices program and follow, you know, the letter of the law and move forward from there. That would be my suggestion. Council, discussion. Councilmember Lund?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I think just the duration of, of being in business and, and the distance from May, it, it does make sense to, to look at that as, as though they were a best practices organization with the promise that you will be. I realize that you could have gone other, other routes during that time, but, but I do think us offering a one, once-a-year opportunity does make it more challenging for that. So I would, I would say that, that makes sense to go along with, with as though...
Is that a motion, Councilmember?
Yes, this is a motion.
Councilmember Lund makes the motion for the five hundred dollar fine with the three days suspension stayed, and that by March first, that they have in writing that they'll be part of the best practices program. That's the motion, is it seconded, seconded by Councilmember Brox. I think we're clearly understood. Council, discussion. Councilmember Foltz?
I, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say that I, I understand Mecca's plight, and I see that there's a huge difference between what's going on at Breakaway Arts and Cub Foods. Cub Foods is in the business of selling liquor in their liquor store. That's all they're doing, is selling liquor. They're not, you know, fixing, you know, putting lattes in the mix and selling quiches and things like that and, and having, you know, mayhem. They were selling just liquor, and I don't think that there's any excuse, absolutely none, for not making sure that you're carding absolutely everybody that looks underneath the age of forty. And I'm afraid that we're going to be setting a precedence that, you know, that it's cheaper just to take the risk of not training your employees and having, and the other items that are within the best practices. I mean, it's cheaper just to forego all of that if, you know, your first offense every twenty-four months is going to be a one thousand dollar civil penalty, or if you're in the best practices, it's a five hundred dollar penalty. And so I'm, you know, willing to, you know, be accommodating for Mecca and then also the, the new Mexican restaurant as well, because they're probably in much the same plight. But I think that we need to take this as, you know, serious business, that selling to minors is inexcusable and that we do have to take it seriously. I, I just, I'm feeling rather sickened as to why do we have these ordinances if we're not going to enforce them? Why do we have these rules? Why do we ask officers to go into these places and do compliance checks if we're not going to abide by the rules that we set forth with the penalties? And so I won't go on and, you know, on and on and on, but I want to make my position clear, that I, I do see the difference, and I, and I, and I do expect that our restaurants and liquor stores within this community do better. Thanks.
I, I would just say, Councilmember, I think that's well thought out and expressed, but our best practice program has had success. It's been out there, it has been training people, and there's a lot of people that have not violated it. So I, you know, as we, we face these issues tonight, no doubt we had some issues here, but I think if we step back and look at the whole program, it has made impacts, a positive impact, because we all know that selling alcohol to minors is, is not a good thing. And, and so I think once we step back and we look at the whole program and what it has done in the community, I was, one, about a year ago, I stopped by, and, and that room was full upstairs. That room was full, in the community room upstairs, for people taking the best practices program. So it's getting out there.
Sure. I'm not saying... the compliance check.
I think we would all agree.
Right.
Councilmember Liefel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mecca, I can sympathize. I'm in charge of hiring people and onboarding them as well, and I understand that training and scheduling can be very difficult. I find it very, I'm pleased to hear from the previous speakers and Mecca as well that I don't believe anyone's intent is to sell to minors. I really don't believe that to be the case, based on what we're seeing here. We're not known as that community. I can tell you that. I have young children. We're not known as a community who sells to minors. And I feel that, based on what Mecca said individually on this particular motion, that I believe the intent was there. I believe that she looked to that, saw that program was not available. And I, that to me speaks volumes to someone who, she was aware of it, for one, that it was available. She did seek it out. It wasn't available. It was her intention. I applaud her for making that. Should she have made more of an effort, that would come down to employees. And I can say from personal experience, you exclude a lot of employees by having to say, "Okay, but I'm only going to hire you once you do this." And maybe that's what it comes to, you know, if that's the case. Because I don't believe it's anyone, especially the business owner's intent to sell to the minors. So personally, I would be for what's in front of us, just based on the fact that she has agreed to sign the documents that she will pursue it immediately. Now the hard part is going to be enforcing it with turnaround, and hopefully that doesn't continue to be an issue for you, so.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion before us. Councilmember Bolsonic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to vote against this motion. I'm not opposed, again, to the stay on the three days, but I am opposed to the fine. And again, you know, if you listen to the testimony, this is a brand-new business, which we all like to see. It's a, for want of a better term, a mom-and-pop business. I don't know if Dave would take offense to that or not, but anyway. This is the kind of business that we want to encourage in Hastings. Listening to the testimony that was presented to us, you know, you've got employees that work 10 hours a week, 15 hours a week. I look at our regulations, at our ordinance, and this is an ordinance that is set up for a business that has employees who work 40 hours a week. And it's not a realistic ordinance. And that's why I was asking those questions earlier about, you know, when is this thing offered, and can we offer it at different times, and so on and so forth. You have a business owner that applied for her license long before she ever picked up a hammer and started to do any renovations in the business, turned around the next year, got a renewal on the license before she ever even opened, said that she wanted to take the program, but she had no employees, and knowing full well that the program wouldn't be offered again until May by the city, she had her own manager sit down with the employees and go through a best practices program, even though it was not official. So she did, she did about everything she possibly could, you know, short of, you know, corralling everybody and finding someplace where the classes would be offered. It's hard with employees. It's very hard. I was the commander at the American Legion for two years, and as commander of the Legion, it's 10% meetings and 90% your staff. And we had the same problem and still have the same problem. I keep in touch with Paul Fletcher, the new commander, and it's the help, the help, the help, the help, the help. How do you keep them? How do you train them? You seem like you just get them trained and boom, they're out the door. Now what do you do? You can say you sit down, even if you did take the program, and you had 75% of your employees at that time. Again, as I said earlier, I don't know that in a month you'd have 50% of that 75%. It's just near impossible. And I'm just asking you to look at it from the standpoint of a business owner who is just opened up a very fine addition to the business community here in Hastings, has tried to do what is right, and yet we're still going to turn around, try and stick a $500 fine on this. Is there, is there nothing that we will consider, short of the honesty of the testimony that the business owner has brought before us? And so I will vote against this primarily because of the $500 fine. I think it's a brand-new business. $500 is a lot of money for a new business, especially a small one. There is a sincere effort to try and get involved in the best practices program, and I think this business deserves the benefit of the doubt. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion. I'll just say this, Joe, I understand, or Councilmember Bolsonic, I understand your passion, and I understand the difficulties there are. But the fact of the matter is, is that state law was broken, which is, to that individual, gross misdemeanor. And I cannot look at any other business in this community if, what you're, because ultimately what you're saying is that there will be no penalty. There would be no penalty. No monetary, no state. And I don't know if I can look at any other businesses in this community that we've already put sanctions on in the past or in the future. This is a terrible precedent to set. Now, I think you laid the case of why we can feel some sympathy. But we have to step back from there for a second. Remember that we are representatives of 23,000 people and a lot of wholesale businesses, and a lot of them selling liquor. And we have to look at the big picture. The state law was violated, and we have provisions to govern what we do to that liquor license because we are the issuer of that license. And I, and so as eloquent as you were, sir, I just couldn't, I couldn't support that movement, I guess. Councilmember Bolsonic.
Thank you, Your Mayor. Thank you, Your Honor, and eloquently stated, by the way. Well, and I understand, state law, all right. And I understand the, you know, the wrong-headedness of selling to a minor, if it is done on purpose, I guess. And that's part of my concern. The second thing is, you know, as you eloquently said, this is state law, and we do have an ordinance, but the ordinance does say that we can deviate, as a counsel, from the fines that are set within the ordinance. There is that option to deviate. And I would like to think that our ability to deviate is based on certain kinds of things that may have been brought up at tonight's meeting by the establishment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, and I think this is just great, that we're having this kind of discussion. I think it really is. And I hope the public is understanding and patient with us as we're going through this. But I think we've got some things that we've got to look at down the line as a city, not so much just looking at it in terms of what we're doing to a business or two, but in terms of how we've got some things that are laid out here and the procedures that we may have inadvertently gone through. I think we've got to make this program more available, whether it's online or more often or a combination of both. I think we need to, you know, look at how this is all worded, because a business just opening up, you know, looking at 20 pages of literature is bound to perhaps make a mistake on this. And I just think that we need to give a new business the benefit of the doubt. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we have the London motion before us, which is the $500 fine, the three-days suspension stayed, and written notice by March 1st that they're in the best practices program. Is there any further comment to that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The motion prevails. Okay, next we have the El Mexican Restaurant of Hastings. Dan?
Your Honor and counsel, similar situation here. The council's asked to consider an administrative penalty to El Mexican Restaurant of Hastings LLC. Again, I believe there's representatives from the restaurant here today, and again, it's my understanding they will waive any factual hearing, but would like to address the counsel as to the penalty to be imposed. They are not in the best practices program at this time, and there have been no prior violations. Thank you.
Okay, would someone like, would you like to come to the podium and give us your name and address, please? Welcome to the council meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name's David Perez. I live out in Woodbury, 10819 Kingsfield Lane. About five months ago or so, we took over what previously was Red Rock Cafe. It's now El Mexican Restaurant. It happened just, it's weird how it happened, but we came to Hastings and we fell in love with this town. And our plan is to move down here as soon as we can and grow up our family here. As in regards to, I guess, I've heard of a lot of different points of view. Me, I've been working in the restaurant business since I was 18. I've worked in bars. I've never had this type of situation. And as I'm growing up, or as I'm grown up, and now I have a son and a daughter, I couldn't imagine myself selling beer or alcohol to a minor. I couldn't have that happen to my kids even. So I do take it personal, you know? I wouldn't do that intentionally. And one by one, all of our staff, you know, there is problems with the turnovers, and they're leaving and they're coming. But I took time to, one by one, each of my staff members that are serving liquor, I took time to show them how to check an ID. This is what an ID looks like. If the person is under 21, it has a red flag right on it. Come on, people, check this, you know? If it doesn't have that, next step, go to the date. And of course, there's also other types of different IDs that we have to check and stuff. And for those, I tell them, you know, come to me because I'm there most of the time. Right now, I'm putting like 70 hours a week into this. But we are humans, and mistakes did happen. That day, we were busy. It was just a lack of judgment on behalf of my server and my wife. And mistakes happens, and we just, we asked for a little bit of leniency. It's been hard to start up a restaurant, a small business. It really has. We took everything that we had, that we owned, we sold it in order to buy this restaurant and to bring to Hastings something different. We thought we have something to offer this community. And we'd like to stay in business, but those fines and stuff, it's hard. But I mean, if there's leniency and we can use some of that money that you might find us and do the best practices program, we'd be willing to go ahead and do that.
Sir, do you agree to waive the factual hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's duly noted. Okay, thank you for your testimony. Appreciate that. Counsel, we'll have that discussion. Councilmember Liefel.
First, I'd like to comment that you have the two best-behaved children that I think we've ever seen in council, maybe two and a half, I'm not sure. Is it too soon for me to make a motion to accept?
What's your motion, councilmember?
I would like to accept the action presented in front of us as a first-time violation to the $500 civil penalty and to forego the suspension.
Okay, so previous, like the previous motion that passed, so $500 civil penalty with the three-days suspended, so the three-day suspension stayed, so that wouldn't occur, and a written notice by March 1st that they're in the best practices program.
Correct.
Okay, that is the motion. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Discussion? I think we're all becoming fully informed. So, Councilmember Bolsonic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am not going to go through everything that I went through already. I'm just going to remind you that I did go through all of that and that you would keep that under consideration when you take your vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Brock's.
And thank you, Mr. Perez, for bringing your business to Hastings. We appreciate it. We value it. We know it's a lot of hard work. I don't own a small business, but I can imagine with two little kids that it would be very challenging. It's a tough schedule. It's a lot of hard work. I have a brother-in-law who's in the restaurant business. My sister's been in the restaurant business. It is not easy. So I just want you to know, like, I empathize with that. I think what's hard here is that if I was a business owner, I just quickly Googled, you know, online liquor classes, and you can find links to six or seven different online courses. So what I would advise is just if the time can be made, to go somewhere to participate in the city's program, to just think creatively about other resources. And I know that you're an entrepreneur, so you are creative and you have that ability. I don't want to sound like I'm trying to tell you how to do your business, but there is, you know, there might be other solutions. We, as a city, need to look at what our role is in that. But as you're a business owner and you are a creative problem solver, that might be another way that you can get a training done that could be certified by us that we didn't have to give you. So that's my recommendation. I think that that would be a good solution to some of the timing issues. And I would just advise all of our small business owners to look into some sort of online training, because I think that would be a very viable option. I don't know the expense of it. I don't run a training program, for the record. I'm just trying to think creatively about what else could be done. But I just want you to know, we support you. We support our small businesses. We want to do everything we can. But I think we also have to follow the law. And so that's what I'm most concerned about here.
Councilmember Liefel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Based on comments from Councilmember Bolsonic as well as Brock's just now, I feel like we certainly want to listen to all the perspectives, what everyone has to say about this, and we do absolutely need to represent the entire community. Based on what I'm hearing, I feel like it may need to be addressed at a later time regarding the ordinance, what Councilmember Brock's just mentioned. That may be information that we can include in our writings, ors or ands instead of blank messages. So I would like to suggest that at a later date, this is something that we send a committee to have further discussion, because obviously we're all, we want what's best for our business owners, certainly. We want what's best for our children and the entire community. So I would like to see us have further discussions at a later time regarding everything we've heard tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion. We have a motion before the body. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The motion prevails. Shortly here, the council will be adjourning to go into closed-door session. So we're going to go into closed-door session for the purposes of a security report. Prior, however, to that, we will have before us announcements. Counsel, oh, excuse me, comments from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience? Please, sir.
Hello, me, John Langfield.
Yes, please give your name for the record, and welcome to the meeting. We're glad to have you here.
My name is John Langfield. I live up on 19th and Forest. And just to give you a little bit about myself, I've worked in critical care for 25 years as a respiratory therapist. In the last 17, I retired from children's in Minneapolis. And there really isn't anything more important than protecting our children. And when you spoke to the issue of the ordinance that you're going to try to put forth and study about the possibility of it going forward, it shouldn't be a possibility. It should be the number-one thing on your list to accomplish, not a possibility to study. I've seen what diseases- I've seen what diseases and trauma can do to kids up close and personal and it's horrible. Nothing I've ever done in critical care is worse than a monster taking advantage of children and brutalizing to the point of being brain dead or just messed up the rest of their life. The fact that this guy is moving within 1,000 feet of Pine Crest Elementary and right around the corner from a park is just absurd. Yeah, I don't even know why these guys are allowed to come in town. They should be someplace out of town. Put them, instead of building a new trail or a new thing at the, down on the Mississippi, build an apartment building for these guys to sit out in the country away from kids. Something along those lines. It's, it's, I just can't speak, I've, I've seen this stuff in the hospital and the, the other level three offender that lives down on 3rd Street and, is Chief Schaefer still here? I've got the message on your voicemail. I'll tell you what it's about now. I was at the Y the other day and he tried to get into the Y with his social worker. One of the employees down there that recognized him and said that you're not welcome here. You have to leave. He's guilty of, you know, there's kids here, taking advantage of a 17-year-old delayed adult with offenses I'll leave unmentioned right now. And there's a lot of delayed young men down at the, down at the Y. There's some trisomy 21s, Down Syndrome. There's some other situation where some delayed individuals that are volunteering and working down there. And this guy was with the social worker going to get into the Y if it wasn't for an observant employee. And I've got this from two reliable sources. And I don't know if that was ever addressed with you guys or, or not.
This was.
Can you share what steps were taken?
You know, this is comments of the audience, Mr. Langenfeld, so please just address us and, and, and just give your testimony.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to talk to the chief later, that's, that's another matter. Okay?
You, you can't study the possibility of putting this through. It has to be done.
Let me just give you context to my words. My words, I, you know, as elected official, you don't presume, okay, votes. I can only vote for how I feel, not my, all my colleagues, okay? So that's why I said we're possibly going in there because they're going to be discussed and they're going to put together an ordinance and they'll probably vote in that committee for an ordinance to bring it out here. But you don't, as elected official, presume what your elected, fellow elected officials are going to do. And that's, that's the contents I made it, not about all, it's, you know, it's out there somewhere. So I just want to give you some context.
Okay, I just want to make sure you guys are really taking it serious because...
I think we took it serious. I think we took it very serious.
It's just an unbelievable situation.
I agree. I agree.
I've got three grandkids within yards of me, right across the street. And...
I agree.
I, I can't speak in good company what my thoughts are.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else you'd like to speak to the council? Anyone else? Okay, counsel, announcements. Do we have announcements? Councilmember Vaughn?
Just that I have to, I will be attending the Minnesota High Speed Rail meeting on March 2nd down in Red Wing.
Oh, high speed. Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. Councilmember Foltz, did you have an announcement?
I think a number of us are going to be attending on Saturday, the Chambers Tourism Discussion from 9:00 to 11 o'clock.
Great, I've got that on my list, so I'm going to mention that again. Councilmember Lund? Okay. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, I have a few announcements. The Red Rock Corridor Commission will be meeting Thursday, February 23rd at 4:30. Councilmember Vaughn will be at that meeting and that'll be at Newport City Hall. There'll be a tourism meeting, again, as just said by councilmember Foltz and Lund, tourism meeting Saturday, February 25th, 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at City Hall. It's sponsored by the Tourism Bureau. It's open to anyone in the community to share your thoughts on, on your favorite things to do in Hastings and provide suggestions on how to have Hastings develop its tourism assets. This assessment is program is through the University of Minnesota Extension Tourism Department, which will provide suggestions and short and long-term goals to enhance tourism traffic in Hastings. So it sounds like a fun subject and it's free and open to everybody and the public is all invited. So hopefully we have a lot of people there. And just to entice you, pastries and beverages will be provided. So how about that for some enti- enticement? The Planning Commission will be meeting, we from tonight, on Monday, February 27th at 7:00 p.m. here at Hastings City Hall. The next city council meeting will be on Monday, March 6th. Prior to the meeting, this council will be taking a tour of the Hastings Family Service Facility. So councilmembers, make sure you put that down on your schedule. And Mike Schmitz has left. Officer Schmitz has left. I wanted to wish him a happy birthday, which is on the 6th, or on the Saturday, February 26th, so, or Sunday, so.
Can you read the time? Can I make sure it's 23?
Yeah, 6:00 p.m. 6:00 p.m. Okay, counsel, there's no other business before us. I will move that we recess for the purposes of going into closed door session to discuss a security report. Motion to recess is in order. Move by councilmember Brock, seconded by councilmember Foltz. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. We are recessed. Stay right here and then we'll open up the closed door here.